invocation will be given by Minister Cheryl Williams, State Chaplain, Texas Department or Department of Texas, the American Legion, if you will. And everyone, if you'd please silence your phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Oh, great, great and mighty God, we come before you, umly, before your throne of grace, that we might obtain help in the time of need. We thank you that we can come to you just to be thankful. So first of all, we say thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this city, a city that still believes and invokes your name. We thank you for the opportunity to participate in governance of this city. We thank you, God, where you said, "Our city that has the righteous in charge will rejoice." We thank you for these righteous men and women who lead this city. We pray, God, that you will give them the wisdom that they will lead and guide us in the paths that you have ordained for the city of Beaumont. Make us the beautiful mountain. Call us to be a city set on a hill that we might become the citadel of hope. Bless these who are in charge. It's all in your name that we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember, what's your name again? Dureo.
Present.
Member Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felsa.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Neil.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, today we have two proclamations. Tina Broussard, the city clerk, will read the first proclamation. After it is read, I will announce your names so that you can come up to the podium with any members of your group and shake the council's hand and get any pictures and have any comment. The first proclamation is recognizing November 12th through the 18th, 2023, as Nurse National Nurse Practitioner Week, accepting, I get ahead of myself, sorry.
Whereas nurse practitioners, MPs, play a critical role as trusted providers for health care for patients in our state. And whereas MPs work to expand health care access in undeserved communities, promote health equity and care, and improve health outcomes for all. Whereas patients depend on more than 355,000 licensed licensed MPs in the United States and 71,000 in the state of Texas to diagnose, manage, and treat their chronic and acute health care conditions. And whereas MPs provide high-quality, primary, acute, and specialty health care with emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices every day. And whereas Southeast Texas Nurse Practitioners Organization is a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving the community of Southeast Texas. The members of the Southeast Texas Nurse Practitioners volunteer at health fairs throughout the year. The organization has established a clinic drive to adopt local school nurses, has worked with law enforcement to educate the community on the opioid crisis, and recently participated in the October 7th Alzheimer's Association Walk at the event center where they participated in the opening ceremonies. Were ranked number four as one of the top donating teams. They had two champion walkers and one grand champion walker. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim November 12th through the 18th, 2023, as National Nurse Practitioner Week and congratulate the Southeast Texas Nurse Practitioners on the 10th anniversary of their organization. We thank you for all of your dedication and commitment to the city of Beaumont. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, November 7th, 2023. Roy West, Mayor of the city of Beaumont.
Accepting will be Mrs. Cynthia Arseneau and the Southeast Texas Nurse Practitioner Organization. So you're all welcome.
If y'all can go ahead and have words first and then we take pictures after, if you don't mind.
I am the president of the Southeast Texas Nurse Practitioners, and we want to say thank you all on behalf of everyone for allowing this proclamation.
Thank y'all.
All right, you ready?
Cheese.
Mayor, they would like to go ahead and leave. They have to get back to work.
We have a proclamation recognizing November 11th as Veterans Day, and Councilman Dureo will be reading that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century. And whereas our state is home to more than 544,000 veterans, 60,000 active-duty military, 17,000 National Guard and reserves and their families. And whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas our veterans understand the important tasks before the American servicemen and women now keep in watch. And whereas all citizens must strive to ensure that ours remains a land worthy of great love, our veterans have shown for it. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the city of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2023, as Veterans Day in Beaumont, Texas, and encourage all people in our state to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Roy West, Mayor, November 11th, 2023.
Accepting will be Mr. Ray Hardy and Mr. John Bryan.
America, we get the other members of the American Legion to come up also.
Everybody with the groups is welcome to come. Want to speak first?
Mayor, council members, we just would like to thank you so much for this proclamation. We appreciate it. We, along with other veteran groups, just have enjoyed the 180-degree the country has turned in the last 50 years. And it's just been a pleasure being a veteran now. At one time, it wasn't. But now it is a pleasure being a veteran. We are having a Veterans Day ceremony at Ben J. Rogers Park Saturday. And of course, you're all invited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if y'all would like to come forward for a photograph.
All right, y'all, we're going to count you down in three, two, and one, smile.
I'm not used to somebody doing that for me.
One more, in three, two, one.
He does it very well, doesn't he, though?
For those that were here for the proclamations and would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And thank you for coming. Now we have a communications update by Lauren Montez, Director of Communications for the city of Beaumont.
Mayor, for me, we're always looking for ways to communicate with the council and the public. So we're doing something different and new. We're going to start having presentations, reports from communications at every council meeting on current events in the city, things of interest for the council and for the public. So Lauren and her department's going to be doing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you all, and we wanted to thank everyone. First slide, please. Who came out last week to the community cleanup day? Our wonderful partners at BISD, Lamar and others. Together, we all collected 2,300 pounds of trash, which is pretty incredible. Excellent. If you couldn't make it, you can also help Beautify Beaumont anytime by contributing to the Beautify Beaumont Fund. Just contact Water Customer Service at 409-866-0023 to have a voluntary $2 donation added to your monthly utility bill, which supports efforts like the cleanup, flowering and planting, and public art and murals. Excellent, thank you. Today, November 7th, is the special election day. You can visit our website, beaumonttexas.gov for propositions, sample ballots, polling locations, and times. The CVB just launched Go Bo Gifts, a new online gift shop. Check it out for all your stocking stuffers, holiday shopping, and show your local pride. Animal Care is holding their first-ever open house at the Dog House Event on November 17th. If you're interested in fostering or volunteering, it's a great time to tour this facility and learn more from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with their extended hours. As part of the $1.4 million Parks Capital Improvement project budget in 2023, we recently completed the scoreboard replacement at the athletic complex, the Magnolia Park basketball conversion, and the Babe Zaharias Playground. We are close to completion on the Sprott Park Shelter installation and the dog park at Rogers Park. The Chalharten Pollard Playground is also expected to be completed by the end of November, pending equipment delivery. You can always check the status of these projects on our dashboard, which is on the Parks page of our website. The city will be closed on November 10th for Veterans Day and November 23rd and 24th for Thanksgiving. There will also be no city council meetings November 14th or 28th. And we hope you look forward to our upcoming events, like the Christmas tree lighting on November 29th. We invite you all to come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda. Regular agenda items are on any other topics, and regular agenda items, 1 through 4. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comment. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And there is a kiosk in the back for you to sign up on if you have not yet.
Emma Richardson, public comments.
Can I waive my time and give it to Deandre?
No, ma'am, we don't waive time. Everybody gets three minutes, and we welcome you to speak. But everybody's time at the podium is limited to three minutes. The policy has been set, and we are, we're not waiving anybody's time. We hadn't done it in the past, and tonight, today's going to be no exception to that.
So just so we're clear, I can't answer questions from the audience and list directed to by staff. We only can talk about things that are posted items. So the mayor has stated what his preferences for this meeting.
So is Ms. Richardson not speaking? One person at a time at the podium. Is Ms. Richardson not speaking? I seen Isadora. Three minutes.
Sean Isador, I live in Groves, Texas. I just want to say I'm the Assistant General Manager at the Park on Calder. Working with them has been a great experience. They're a great group of people, family, friends. With that being said, I can't say that without speaking on the disappointment that we've experienced in just this short amount of time. The way we've been targeted, which feels like harassment, it's just been outrageous. All we try to do is have a place for people to come and enjoy themselves, family, friends, whatever the case may be. But we have been targeted in so many different ways. It's extremely hurtful when all we want to do is employ people that want to be employed with us and give the citizens of Beaumont a place to be and to enjoy themselves. I'm pretty sure y'all have probably heard or seen the things that we've encountered in just this short two months. I know other establishments have not received that type of treatment in the years or months to years that they've been opening. So all I'm asking is that we get that same fair treatment. I don't know the exact chain of command, where, who goes to who, but I feel like we deserve that same treatment that other people get. We deserve that too, because we're just here, like I said, to employ people and to give everyone in Beaumont a place to go and enjoy themselves. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Stephen Vasquez.
How you doing? Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. West. I'm Chef Stephen Vasquez. I've been working in, well, from Texas to Georgia for the last 20 years as a chef professionally. This is a restart for me and my family. I'm sorry. I was employed with Logan's for the last two years as their chef manager. And, you know, they shut down, so I traveled with them to Georgia after that. And so now I found a home here back in Beaumont, in my city. And, you know, the park loves me, and I love them as well. Everybody that I work with, you know, ask, "Our GM said we just want a fair shot." And I'm sorry that I'm emotional with y'all, but, you know, I have two eight-year-olds at home that depend on me and my wife to take care of them. So thank you for your time and the opportunity, and I want to invite y'all to the park to come enjoy some of my great food.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I'm calling in the order that they've signed up. So there may be some people that will come before them.
Right.
And so I just want to make that aware. Tony Lagone, public comments.
I'm Mayor, City Councilmember, Ward 4. Very good job. I was there, I saw the cleanup, what they were doing. I just want to bring sweets and treats like I always do. So it's a special something in there. And anybody that I forget, trust, I'll be back. May I pass him?
That's up to the mayor.
May I pass him?
That's fine.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
David Pete, public comments.
If everybody that's not speaking right now with the park, since it's not a park associated, if y'all'd please sit down, I'd appreciate it so that other people in the back may be able to see.
Okay, can I get the start right?
Hasn't started yet, that's correct.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, and to the council. Just a few things that I want to address. One of the things is, I know that there was an incident downtown where four youths were found to defame in a building. And I inquired about whether or not that building was a part of the city, or did the city also have anything to do with the cameras? I got my confirmation, the city does not own the cameras, is a proper business, that's fine. But the problem that I have is, is that it's stating that those individuals have been identified but not arrested. So that's a problem, because we have crime all through this city. And we can identify people, and we have arrested them and convicted them for the crime. But these four young men have not been convicted or prosecuted as of yet. So I just want to make sure that the city and Beaumont PD are doing their due diligence to make sure that all crimes are prosecuted accordingly, that everybody that's involved get, you know, get what they deserve, you know, no matter what the color may be. So I want to make sure of that. And so another thing is too, I haven't heard anything yet, updates on the AT&amp;T Building. You know, the city of Beaumont spent $4 million purchasing that building, and it's just sitting there doing nothing. So if anyone could give an update at your earliest convenience, or if I have to do a request, I would do that. But I would like to know an update on what's going on with that building and why it has not been, you know, anything done about it. And this is, this is something not on anything I'm talking about. But just overall, we, you know, we as a city have to make sure that we are fair and impartial. And anything that goes in this city, we got to make sure that everybody's treated fairly, regardless, regardless of the background, regardless of what the image is. Treat them fairly, okay? And I'm, you know, I feel that gentleman that came up here, I feel him, you know what I'm saying? And it is sad, you know what I'm saying? That he has to be a part of the targeting or whatever it may be because of somebody else's indiscretions and somebody else's, you know, activities. So we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. The council is doing it the right way. You're doing your due diligence. You're doing what you're elected to do, and you're doing it fairly so everybody can be treated fairly and feel welcome in the city of Beaumont. I lived here all my life. I've been raised here, okay? And my children have been raised here, have gone to the schools. So we adhere to the rules and regulations in this city. And we want the same thing back from the city. So if I come to you, I'm expecting you to give me what I'm asking for. Don't give me, don't give me crumbs. I want the full, I want the full meat of it, okay? All right, so when I come, I want you to give me just what you asking me for, okay? So that we all can be fair and do things fair and impartial. Amen. And let me also say to you, Mr. Getz, my condolences to you for your loss.
Thank you, sir.
Tess Wells, public comments.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm coming because I've had some problems in this city, I left it. My children have been, were put in human trafficking. It took me about four years to locate my daughter and her girls in Dallas. But even when I located them, I just saw them. I couldn't put my hands on them, I couldn't talk to them. I've had attorneys, judges tell me, "You need to go to the place where the crime occurred, when it occurred here." My son was castrated in a house owned by the Masons in South Park of Beaumont. No one ever told me, and for some time, I've stopped though. At least seven years, I tried getting a copy of the incident. I knew where the house was. In fact, the guy that was repairing the house told me I needed to leave. But I've never been able to get the police department to give me any information whatsoever. Now, I'm in the place Huntington of Beaumont. My apartment is under surveillance. That's the best word I can find. But people can see me in my home. And I felt that that should have been told to me. It hasn't been. See their Beaumont workers in their truck, the white truck with the black writings on it? Harassed me. They, I don't know what black and white is. And for most of you, that's kind of far-fetched. Sometimes the citizens are the one constantly being harassed because you can't get anybody in your position, public servants, to really listen. They haven't experienced it, you know? So to have my daughter, even my daughter was castrated. And nobody to really care, care enough to listen, attorneys. I've gone to Dallas, Houston. I'm not eating, I've slept outside for years. Dr. Cabala did surgery on my body and things that were put there illegally. Can't get an attorney to take care of that. But nevertheless, I wanted her because I've tried to get to Mayor West. I even wrote him and let him know. My children were taken. I'll end there by saying I needed to talk.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
The Pharaoh, Richard.
Good afternoon, everyone. In the light of the Lord, I bring you greetings from I Am That I Am. On behalf of Ayesha Johnson, John Tomlinson, Laura Gutierrez, Summer Ross, Catherine, they found in a trunk, Sunday Nelson, Cordell Marquise Evans, also known as Adeline. And yes, I wanted to say that I work with the homeless people, and I did this out of my heart. I work on Skid Row in Los Angeles, California, a part of the Mobile Crisis Team. I know 100% that the allegation that a young man came forward to admit that he- that he murdered two of these young ladies, I believe it, because one of them was beheaded. How would anybody know? Why isn't anything being done? Just because they're ladies of the night, it doesn't mean they don't have rights. If they signed a contract, unfortunately, if they felt that their body was their only source of income. I can't say that I agree with it. I just thank God that I never had to make that choice, because I don't have a child pulling on my legs saying, "Mom, I'm hungry." So I don't judge. But I know 100%, something is being done. There's a leaderboard with all the homeless people's names on it. My Uncle Herbert Wilson was killed two weeks prior, another homeless man was killed. How convenient to hit them with a car. An alleged officer of the Beaumont Police Department confirmed by Internal Affairs tried to hit me when I was crossing the street. She tried it twice, of Latino descent. I was arrested on the 10th of September, the 17th, the 21st, and the 29th. An officer claimed I had a inactive, I, I had a warrant for assaulting a judge. The warrant said, "When you see him..." I have never had any type of sex surgery. I am a female, so I don't even understand it. It's wrong, but I am an advocate for the defenseless, but first of all, I'm an advocate for Christ. It breaks my heart to hear that people are pleading for you to help them regarding their establishment. No one has the right. The Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States affords everyone the opportunity for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. How dare you choose what that happiness is? We all need to get on our knees and stop being judgmental. I'm sorry for the loss of your wife, gentlemen on the council. But for you guys to be sneaky and try to have your terms extended to four years, that's dirty. That's dirty. You need to be accountable every year, every year, for what you do and choose when you represent us. Beaumont Independent School District is in danger. Their administrator needs to be removed. The children are not learning, the parents are running the school, teachers are quitting because their voices are not being heard. But guess what? My voice will be heard. In the light of the Lord, I thank you for your time. Remember me, because I promise you, today will not be the last day. Sarafian Valada, Rashad Kula Bali, thank you.
Dolores Clark, public comments?
My name is Dolores Clark, and I live here in Beaumont. And I'm coming up, uh, on behalf of the park, uh, part of the park. Anyway, I just want to say that I really truly believe that the things that are going on with the park is, it's ridiculous. It's uncalled for. These people are here trying to make a, a living for the employees. They have, uh, children that depend upon this income. And all of the things that are going on, it's no reason for this to be doing. If it's something that needs to be addressed, we need to put it out in public, get it done, and get it over with. Because it's time for them to stop what they're doing and harassing them, is what the way I look at it, okay? We're here, we're trying to, I go to the park, I sit there, it is such a peaceful and calming effect on myself. I don't know, I know a couple of you have been there, I've seen you there. And like I say, to me, it's just a, a release, okay? If they just take the time, go out there, the food is great, okay? The atmosphere is just wonderful, and the people there are extremely kind and nice to everybody. So whatever is going on, we need to put it out in public and get it over with and be done with it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you all.
Loria Landry? Deandre Moore?
Hello, so thank you all for having us here, as you heard from some of my employees and some of my family members. We're here again today, I was talking with some of you all at the Parkland Calder, who were able to visit. It's Councilman Duryo, Councilman Albert Turner, the mayor, city attorney, and the city manager. When you all came, you met with some of the residents that were there. And even your police chief and assistant chief Plunkett, who were also there. My place has been targeted back-to-back by residents who don't want us there, I won't lie. It feels, and we know for a fact, it has been racially motivated, and a lot of the stuff that we've seen from the Beaumont Police Department. Last Wednesday, we got a subpoena from Officer Darling Wisby, who came in and asked for our camera footage from the night of October 28th, going into the morning of October 29th. There was an incident involved with a young lady who hit a police car. The officers alleged that she came from the Parkland Calder. However, we have no recollection of, we have no, um, facts stating that she was at the Parkland Calder, there's nothing in our system. We scanned patrons' IDs, she was not inside of that, her car was not swiped, and she was not on cameras. When Officer Wisby came with that subpoena last week, we told her that, um, you know, we would turn that camera footage over to her, we just needed a flash drive. That was all cool with TABC there. She started asking my assistant general manager for, um, the, all of our employees' names, addresses, data births, all this extra stuff for no reason at all. And I stopped and I told her that we would not turn that over to her, because that was not a part of the subpoena. And she walked away saying, "It's okay, I'll show you." And she came back the next day with a SWAT team, 10 cars deep, had my mother cornered into a corner, what they warrant, and a sworn affidavit stating that we told them that we would not give them anything, which was a complete lie. This information has been turned over to some of you all. We've reached out to the police chief to understand why this is happening, and nothing yet has still happened. And I just want to say, well, we really want us to be left alone. We've been open for 60, 63 days now. That's not even in kind of days that were closed on Mondays. And we've grown sales higher than any establishment around here, um, in the last five years, in our first 30 days in one month period alone. We have people, our employee of over 30-plus employees here, we have the highest pay, pay grade of any other restaurant in this area. People had to come off of government assistance, they no longer have, are able to get food stamps because of the Parkland Calder. And so when y'all think about people who you talk about all day, who, who are eating up the government's money and all that, well, our establishment is making sure that we have a positive economic impact in this community. We have council members who spend time on Facebook when they should have been spending time with their wives. Councilman Getz worried about what we have going on and spending time with, you know, um, trying to see what they can do. I've seen you all's emails, I've seen your emails, talking to other folks and officers about ways in which we can get issued a nuisance abatement, which would mean that we have to close down. I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with the fact that a lot of you all have been extremely quiet. You said you're working behind the scenes, but I don't want to hear about what you're doing behind the scenes today. We need to hear what you're going to do actively to help us to continue to stay alive and well in this, in this, in this district. I'm a little nervous, but I mean, you know, there's so much more that can be done, you know? Even just today, showing up here, it's not the first time that y'all seen us, it won't be the last time that y'all seen us. But the police chief works for you and the city manager, the police chief works for all of us, and it's up to you guys. You get to pick who the city manager is. And it's, I'm not done talking, I don't care right now, like I said.
Mr. Moore? 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 We, we, I understand that you have more to say, but we are limited to three minutes. Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore? We, we have rules. We have rules.
Charlie Crabbe, public comments? Can we get Mr. Crabbe to?
I got it.
Can we restart his time?
There you go. It's on now.
Yeah, that sounds better. Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive. It's another nice day in Beaumont. I've, I've really enjoyed seeing the resurfacing on Pennsylvania and Sabine Pass. And the transition from streets to the cross streets is really smooth, and that's a very good feature. I hope we maintain that bark from now on, yeah. Oh, yeah, the, uh, information on, uh, a little FYI, as you know, C-SPAN broadcasts the House of Representatives in the Senate Monday through Friday, when they're in session. Saturday and Sunday mornings, C-SPAN has very good book reviews. The book, uh, authors are interviewed and the story is told, which makes the program very interesting. They also, in the morning, from about 6:00 to, a very good early morning, from 6:00 to 8:00, they have a informational programming, they have call-in for citizens who can call in and voice your opinion. Let's see, I think the people at the, uh, the Park Restaurant, they've, they missed the boat of the people coming and complaining about the, uh, loud music. And they, I noticed they didn't address that, they just want to be able to do their business and what have you. And if they would address their loud music, it looks like they would have a very nice restaurant. And, uh, I've noticed the, uh, the city, uh, video on Channel 4. Here lately, it has an ocean sound, which is very soothing. Since it is a nice scene, a starry sky would, would be nice. And, uh, I wish I'd had more positive things to say today, other than it's a wonderful world, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Vernon Darden, public comments?
Good to Mayor and City Council. I want to commend, uh, Deandre for trying to bring some business to Beaumont. Young people need to understand that we're going to support them in a way that doesn't cause them to feel like they have to come and complain like they did today. It was really good that they came today. It's really good that the group supported them and came. It's unfortunate that he couldn't speak longer, but I understand why he's upset. Anytime you feel that you're being violated, you don't just sit back and just take it. So he came, he's, he didn't come with a gun, he didn't come with rocks and sticks, he came with words. And he tried to explain to the group how he's being targeted. It appears that if there's an orchestrated, um, case to shut him down. It appears that way, I'm not sure, but it appears that way because I've personally gone by at night to find the loud music, and I didn't find it. I went by this, I went by this past Saturday at closing, and then I stayed later to see if any policeman was going to come by and harass. It didn't happen Saturday night, and I hope that's the case every night. I live in the country, I have dogs and cats. They eat out of the same bowl. They're supposed to be enemies, but they coexist. There are cowbirds riding on the back of bulls. And the bull will walk, and they disturb the ground, and the bug will fly. They've learned to coexist, and we, we're going to have to learn to coexist, or we won't exist. We must learn to coexist, or we won't exist. We have three ministers on this group up there. Someone prays for this group every time they come. It may be a good idea, just may be a good idea, if you all start praying and believing what you pray. We do. You know, we, we have a real good civil, uh, community here. And it just appears that there's an orchestrated group trying to shut this young man down. And, uh, it is not right. He used the word harassment, and, uh, I hope it's not that. We have a good police department, but they're supposed to be supporting everybody, not just the ones who are complaining. But we must learn to coexist, or we won't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darden.
Is there anyone whose name I didn't call before the mayor closes the mic? What's the name? I'm sorry? Okay, she didn't show up, Kathy Wingate?
Good evening, I said I wasn't going to get up and speak, because I'm not a speaker, my son is. But I too know and feel that we are being harassed. We've been issued two citations since we've been open. They told us the third one, they takes my son to jail. For what? They came out and issued a citation on last Saturday, Friday night. No music on, security stopped, BPD at the door and said, at the gate, because we decided, they decided to close down early. We have a liquor license till 2:00, he said 1:00. Well, 12:50, he shut it down. They walking through the gate, the gate is pulling shut. He asked the officers, "Where are you going?" We giving him a citation. He said, "A citation for what? The music's not even on. DJ's already packing up." Well, because I was told to give it to him from higher up. Why? I can't answer it, they're the only ones who can answer it. Then they bust into the establishment after, it was on Thursday, with a subpoena Darling Wisby did, and she wanted, uh, footage. She wanted to know where was the camera and all the equipment, they wanted to take it. Trey, the manager, was there. I just had, had just gotten there. And I said, "Well, do y'all have something, you know, show us that you're requesting that, a warrant, a subpoena?" And sure enough, she showed it to us. And there was a gentleman with them, had a black garbage bag. I said, "Can we go in with them?" "No, y'all can't go in, police started blocking us. Every time we move somewhere, you move, you can't go in." "Why? I can't watch? I don't know what's in that black garbage bag." No, I'm sorry, brown paper bag correction. Brown paper bag rolled up, you could see something was in it, I don't know what it was. Then he said, "The office is too, it's too small, because it's in the liquor closet." Not too small, forwards getting in and stack, they get in there and stack, I don't stack. The bar manager does, and his team. They shut the door. Back there, police blocked me, I could not see, Trey, the bar manager, could not see nothing. I don't know what you put in there. Do I trust you? No, I don't trust you. You haven't given me no reason to trust you, because I see what you're doing to us and us only. I never would have thought this would be going on in the city of Beaumont. And I've lived here over 60 years, all my life. And to be treated like that, and we know what it is, and to see the comments on Facebook saying, "We're going to call every night, soon as they open up." Soon as we see the DJ. DJ gets out of the car, the car, the calls start coming. He haven't even packed his stuff out. And it's strange, because I asked them on another night, I said, "Y'all got any complaints?" "Oh, no, it's quiet, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine." But Sunday before last, y'all let them set up on Calder, the whole stage and everybody, outside, music blasting, it was okay. It was okay. Right there at Calder between 9th and 10th, DJ, everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. At the close, at the close of city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, the claim of Jazma Watson. Consider matters related to deliberation and of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code, to wit specifically, land owned by the city of Beaumont. It health Phil Bauer and Scott, Lot D, B Block 727, partial Lot A, B 28, 12.424 acres northeast. Not sure what all those initials mean. Portion. Portion, thank you. Of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. So is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda? There is a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the, uh, the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of one digestive blower motor and skid for the wastewater treatment plant, and as funding sources to capital program and recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion on item number one? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. City Manager, will you please have the reading of item number two?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Alco LLC of Beaumont for the street rehabilitation citywide Phase Five, as to rebid the project, and it's coming with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for their approval?
Second.
There's a motion in a second for their approval of item number two. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider a resolution renewing a contract with TMT Utilities, Inc., for the citywide emergency water main repairs two. Funding sources of water utilities funded, and recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Any discussion?
I gave you an update on the latest information I had gotten on leaks, and I don't know if you have something more current.
I'll hand it off to Mike Harris, who's actually running all the crews in the field.
Good afternoon, Councilmember mayors. Just a little update on our leaks and our leak progress. We are currently have roughly 125 water main leaks that's on our books. Through the last probably four, four or five days, we've actually trended upwards a bit. We did have the leaks down to about 78. There's a few factors that contributed to that. You know, we had all of our crews pulled off fixing leaks. We started putting crews back to doing other work, so we've kind of cut our crews a little bit. Just a little bit of leaks that are numbers I wanted to go over with you guys. This is since August 1st, that when we first started getting to the drought, we've had 976 water main breaks, which 883 water main breaks have been repaired. Out of the 883 water main breaks, 730 repairs were completed by in-house crews, 153 repairs through contractors. The particular contractor we're talking about, TMT, they've repaired 60 of the water main breaks, and they've repaired these 60s from October 2nd through October 26th.
Question, mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
What other contractors do we have currently contracted for this work?
Currently, we have C-Tex, TMT, and I'll let you speak with.
We had a third one, Zion, but we had to part ways. They were only able to fix two leaks in the time, and we had some trouble, so we went ahead and cut that one off. So we just have the two contractors currently.
Okay, so are we renewing the other one as well?
The contract with C-Tex has been renewed already once.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the public hearing?
Thank you, mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing authorizing zip to implement the qualified veterans pass And the, there was a discussion or comments by council with the interest of waiving fees for veterans in our city. And so we've looked at that, and we're coming back, and we're prepared to have a discussion on that, but first we need the public hearing.
Okay, so if there's, if we need to open the public hearing, I never do that, and I always get reminded, so at this point, I'm opening the public hearing.
Dolores Clark?
Good afternoon again. My name's Dolores Clark, and I am the Recording Secretary and Volunteer Coordinator for the Southeast Texas Veteran for Veterans. And having this pass would be a great help to us. We do a, what they call a stand down yearly. As a matter of fact, we do four per year. Here in Beaumont, we do it every fourth Friday in September, and we have, and it's open to the public for anybody to come. We had, this year, we had 84, 85 vendors, excuse me, that came out. It was the VA, the Social Security Department, I mean, just anybody you can think of came up. We did end up having 304 veterans that did attend. So if you all give them the passes, they, some of those that really need to be there will have access, and then we have all of the vendors there, which they can do a one-stop, one-stop shop, so to speak. And in that way, they can, of course, they don't have the timeframe to be able to do everything they need at that time, but they can make appointments for them. And if they have the bus passes that they can give free, then they can still make their appointments with them and be able to go. And like I say, we do make sure that when they come through, everybody has to sign in. They have to show me either the ID that has your driver's license, has veterans on there, give me your DD 214, or they'll have their VA cards, so that way we know they are veterans. And like I say, that would help a lot if you all would pass that, and we thank Ms. San Miguel for trying to get this pass through. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, so at this point, the, if there's no other discussions, the public hearing is clear. Oh, yes?
Is it okay if I ask her a question?
Sure.
Do most, will most of the veterans have some type of ID so they can get the bus pass?
They have to have ID to show. They either have the, yeah, they have to show, in order for them to attend the stand down, which they hold up here every year, they have to show me some proof that they're in there. Like I say, you get your driver's license, or even the, just the ID from the city, then they'll have on there that they were a veteran, even some put with a branch of the military. You have your DD 214 as well as your VA card. And once you have a VA card, you know you actually are a veteran, because otherwise they don't pass those out.
So there is some way for them to, they don't have ID, some way for them to get one?
Yeah, we were told at one point that even if they go to the courthouse, they'll give them a copy of their DD 214, the first one will be free. So if they need that, they can go and get that.
All right, thank you.
I believe Mr. Boone has a comment.
Yeah, just to clarify, since this is the public hearing, I just wanted to clarify for the behalf of the public. I know when we, when y'all did the stand down, we did the stand down recently. Council was good enough to waive fees for veterans, and so that was a great way for veterans to get to and from that event. For this particular program, again, it's, it's going to be targeted to those veterans who are, have greater than 50% disability, or who have received a Medal of Honor, or Medal, excuse me, a Medal of Valor commendation. So that would include Air Force Cross, Medal of Honor, Distinguished Service Cross, Navy Cross, or the Purple Heart. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other discussion? Yes, Councilman Durian?
Why do we decide to limit it instead of just making it available to all veterans that can, that can identify themselves as a veteran?
So we pattern our program after other cities like Houston Metro, and so that's, that's, that's the, the way we've set it up. So again, it's, it's those veterans who've received that kind of commendation, or have been, you know, basically designated by the VA with that level of disability.
I have a question. Why do we have to set our limits as to what Houston does? Why can't Beaumont do what Beaumont does?
Be up to the City Council.
Okay, City Council.
I would like to just open it up to anyone that has a proper ID to show that they're a veteran, regardless.
I was thinking that, and I support that as well.
There, there was one, I think, additional issue. Those who had the disability or the medals, they were able to also include their spouse, I think I read.
Yes, so when you're traveling, especially on the STS system, you're allowed to have someone accompany you. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
So, so I, I would agree to allow any veterans to take, participate in the program, but I want to make sure that those veterans who are disabled or who've received the commendations would have the ability to have the spouse also. Was it at a discounted? It was $2.50, I think. There was a reduced fare, or, so is that correct? The spouse wouldn't be able to go at a discounted rate?
Well, if it's the STS, they're allowed to accompany. If, and again, we've, we focus this, patterned it after Houston and other, other systems. My recommendation is if we want to open it up to all veterans, my recommendation would be to go ahead and consider passing this, so that it's in time for Veterans Day, and then staff can regroup and do our research to make sure there are no implications for doing it for all veterans. I assume there's not, but I don't want to sit here and tell you that absolutely there are not.
Well, to my issue, if, if that, I don't mind opening to all veterans, but I want to ensure those veterans who've had the disability would have the ability to have an assistant with them, their spouse, and I think that was a part of the proposal. Am I correct with that?
Yeah. Yeah, again, this is, thank you, Bart. So on the ordinance, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, the STS system, you get a companion, a company for $2.50. If we open it up to all veterans...
That's not my, that's, that's the answer I was looking for, that there is a discount for the person that's with them. And I'm okay with that. But I'm okay with opening the fare to all veterans. And so I just wanted to make sure that would not impact the ability for the, the disabled vet to have their assistance.
So, yeah, so again, just for clarification, medical attendant accompanying somebody, passenger on STS is free. Just a companion, in other words, who's not medically necessary, they're just a companion of an STS, which is our paratransit system, would be $2.50. So then, I guess to your question, and to mine as well, is if you open it to all veterans, how, how would that look? I don't know.
Well, all veterans, it sounded as if there was an easy way to distinguish with the veterans. They would have their cards, their IDs, or even a medal, or any of that. That's the way I understood it.
They show qualified ID, then will the zip system give them a veteran pass that they have to show, or do they just show their ID?
So for what we've proposed today, we are going to partner with the VA, local VA, to determine, you know, whether or not they meet, and basically ensure that they're eligible under these criteria. And so that we would have that on record, and they would have a pass, and so that would be easy. If, again, if we want to open it up to all veterans, I would just ask that we, you know, you allow staff to give us a little bit of time to research to make sure there are no issues.
Because even, if you open it up to all veterans, all veterans are not disabled veterans. Some of them are not even registered with the VA, but they do have a driver's license that may say veteran, and you have to show your DD 214 to get that. Or they'll have a copy of their DD 214. They, they may not all be registered with the VA, because like I said, all veterans are not disabled.
Right.
So basically, this will be closed off to veterans that aren't disabled, if we don't open it up to all veterans.
So what we're proposing is, they have to be veterans, but in addition, they've got to either have a Medal, Medal of Valor, or be at a certain level of disability. Again, the VA would help us in confirming all that. If, if the thought or the consideration is to open it up to all veterans, regardless of disability, regardless of their medal status, you know, I would think that's possible, but I just, I would just ask that we get some extra time.
I would say that all veterans are deserving of that. Some of us actually went through the military, like myself. I, I wasn't injured. I'm a disabled veteran now, but I wasn't injured. I didn't receive, well, two little old medals, but everybody's different, but they're no less deserving. Because they did, like we used to say, we wrote a blank, signed a blank check to the citizens of the United States, said cash it when you get ready to. And we all made that sacrifice, not knowing what we were going to be getting into. When it signed up, we didn't, we didn't know what was going to happen, but we decided to do that. So we're all equally deserving.
I, I don't want to belabor this, and I don't, I want to keep it simple. I'm simple. So if we, as it's been presented, it was presented for those veterans who can validate that they have served our country, and that was, they would have a metal ID or something. That's not being presented at the bus. That's to get the pass. Am I correct on that? Yes or no?
So we will work with the VA, they, we will work with the VA to confirm that they have met that, that level. To get the pass, to get a free access to the transit system.
Am I correct? That's not at the bus. That's...
At the VA.
Right. So they will have something to show that they, they validate that they're veterans?
Yes.
Okay.
And meet the criteria.
Every, every veteran is not registered with the VA, but every veteran has some type of ID.
That's the purpose of the stand down, is to get those veterans registered into the system, to get the benefits they deserve, and paying a $2.50, $2.50 charge to ride a bus, I feel like that's more than, you know, you know, not that much, that they should be given that opportunity to not have to pay regardless of what status they were in the military.
All right, thank you, mayor.
I noticed Mr. Jackson from the zip is here, is, will this have any type of, I don't know, financial burden that the zip can't handle placed on them?
So, there's two ways to look at it. One is STS is limited. In other words, we only have so, it's a, it's a high demand system. Not to say that, again, we're recommending that if you meet this criteria that we set forth, you won't be charged for the use of the STS. But we would anticipate that would, might increase demand. If you open this up to all veterans, then I think you're going to have a much higher demand on that system, which is already limited. In other words, we already turn folks away because there's not capacity. So when you say, let's open it up to all veterans, we need to keep that in mind.
But this is not just for, when you say STS, that's the...
Paratransit.
Okay, but this is just not limited to that. This would be for the regular buses too, right?
Yes, sir. And to your question, in terms of cost, the fixed route, you know, used, for most of our routes, you know, we have extra capacity, so there's really no, there's certainly the loss of revenue from the, you know, the number of tickets that we might have sold, but I don't think, it's, it's not significant, and there's extra capacity. So to your point about lost revenue...
Taking up spots from paying customers.
Yeah, I don't, I think, again, what we're proposing, I don't think anyone's concerned about that. But if you get, if you start to open it up to all veterans, the impact on the STS might be a concern.
Councilman Fellshaw?
So Chris, we could do it at tier, tier level. We could say all veterans ride for free on a fixed route. STS, those that are, receive some type of accommodation... STS, those that are, receive some type of accommodation or they qualify for the disability, they ride free for the STS, correct? So if you're a veteran, doesn't matter, you ride for free on the fixed route. When it comes to special services, though, we'd limit that to Medal of Honor and disability. Could we do that?
I think you could. I think you could. But again, I would ask, because we haven't researched that, what we propose to you is what we've researched, okay? But if we want to open up all the fixed route to all veterans, then again, I would just ask for a little additional time.
Because I think that's Councilman Durio's intent is to honor all veterans. And I think we could do that without impacting our system by just saying fixed routes is free for all veterans, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have another public speaker?
Yes.
Staff.
Demi Ingman, Planning Manager.
Yes, thank you.
So regarding the fixed route and the paratransit, which is the STS services, it may be best practice to, whatever we do, it'd be a uniform decision for paratransit and fixed route. So if we're going to offer free rides to veterans for fixed route, it should be also for STS as well. It's just best practice. And I know Claudia Sammigal is here and she can speak more on that. But from a, you know, everything's working under a grant. So from a grant standpoint and being in compliance with federal, you know, federal statutes, that would be best practice.
There you go. I was going to ask you, could you qualify it? But you, that does sound...
And as far as, I know that there was discussion on the pass, they would basically, for the disability or the medal, they would validate that through the VA and then they would take that application and bring it back to, the VA would bring it back to zip and then we would issue them a pass. So they would have an actual pass to show to the drivers.
Councilman Neal. So my question, I guess more of a legal question than anything, but can you give a city service away for free to one group of people and not all?
So if it's being grant funded, which I believe that it is, it's not technically being like, we're being reimbursed, is what I understand. So I'd have to get with Demi to look at the grant and see how it's being managed and what the grant parameters are. But if we are being reimbursed by the grant, then essentially we're not giving away a service. We're having to report that we did that service and we're being paid for it. So the funding is kind of like a wash.
Okay, so this grant would just be for veterans?
So this program would be for veterans.
Okay.
Qualified veterans at this point. But like Chris said, we can always reevaluate.
No, thank you.
And for further clarification, it's one reason you're asking for additional time to make sure we'll stay in compliance if we expand this?
Correct. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, make that offer and then have to rescind it. So we're comfortable with what we're proposing today, but if we want to expand it, I would ask for additional time to consider that.
Councilman Durio and then Councilman Neal.
So I understand you say you're asking we pass this today, but would it come back? You're going to bring something back so we can have it for free for all veterans? You're going to research that program?
Yes, sir. We can certainly report back to the council that this is what we found. And hopefully we'll be able to bring it back and say, "Look, this is what we recommend." But we'll definitely report back.
Timeline?
Thirty days.
Okay.
Councilman Neal.
Do we have any clue how many veterans ride the bus now? Ballpark or anything?
I don't think we have those numbers.
At this moment.
Well, I know she mentioned that one of the forms of ID is a driver's license with veterans on it, but I wouldn't imagine, you know, that they would be riding the bus. They have a driver's license, so they may be driving. I mean, I have a veteran's ID. I don't ride a bus.
It's free, you will.
Man, we have Ms. Sammigal here too. She might can offer some information on this subject.
Okay.
For the bus.
Well, good afternoon. I can basically repeat everything that has been said. I echo the suggestion on passing this proposal for today because that's going to open the opportunity for people that might benefit tomorrow, whatever. We have had those conversations with local office here next door with the Parents Affairs. They're willing to help us with the validation to make sure that we don't ask our drivers to make a decision based on, you know, different forms of IDs. So it's the one page that the individual requesting for the pass is going to have to fill their information. The VA's office is going to stamp seal that it's valid. We're across the street pretty much. We actually offer that we will go pick them up, complete the process, and we're going to issue a picture ID from the zip. It's going to look like a school ID pretty much that they're going to show to our driver so they can pretty much just board the bus, no hassle. We're just going to count the ridership and that's it. We can definitely go out and research. What will it take to extend this free fare? Which is basically you're waiving the fare. It's not giving free public services, but you're waiving the fare. And that's within your decision to make. So it's not giving away services. So we're ready to go tomorrow. If you approve us to do so, bring that recommendation in thirty days.
I'm good with that, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman Durio.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal, did you have anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
We have one more speaker, Mayor.
Yes, very good.
Charlie Crapp.
Thank you for having me back, Mayor. Council. Mr. Wade. Thank you, Ms. Bruce Art.
You're welcome.
Oh, this, offering the veterans a free pass on the bus is a no-brainer. I mean, we can build all kinds of monuments to them, but this is where we're really telling our veterans, "Hey, we appreciate your service." Now researching these medals of valor and what have you, that should be taken, just thrown out because a veteran's a veteran. He may have... The veteran may have been right next to the guy that got the Medal of Valor, that actually took off, but he probably gave him cover. But, yeah, this would really show our veterans we appreciate them. And if it's funded by a grant, that would really be a no-brainer if this... But I could see restricting the route to less congested. Nine to four, something like that, that would take care of overcapacity or have the veterans wait for the next bus. Anyway, thanks for listening. Let's do this for the veterans.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, so at this point, we need a motion in a second. We need to close the public hearing. And the public hearing is now closed.
You're going to read item four.
And Mr. City Manager, will you please read item number four?
Counsel considered an ordinance authorizing the implementation of the qualified zip veterans pass program.
Is there a motion for item number four?
I move, do I... I want to move to approve it. Do I have to have the understanding that we're going to look at expanding it in thirty days?
No, it's already been noted in the record, Councilman. You could just make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second for approval of item number four. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. All right, at this point, it is time for Councilman comments. And I will start on this side with Councilman Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilman Samuel. Councilman Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor. Just all the citizens, please remember to get out and vote today. I think the post closes at seven o'clock. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Turner.
While Beaumont zip is here, it's been a while that the citizens who live over there on Lucas Street at the senior citizen home, they asked that that bus stop be removed further down the way. I would say it's been about seven, eight months ago. I just kind of want to know, Mr. Williams, can you get with them and give us an update on where we're at with that? Also, I went to speak at an elementary school over there on Pine Street and over there at that, is it Pine Street Park? The bus stop was there and you had some cafeteria workers standing out at the stop. It had a cover. That cover is now gone and they were actually standing in the rain. Actually gave those ladies a ride home that day. So I want to know, the bus stop, it was an accident or whatever had took place? When will we get that bus stop back up there? I think if it was up there prior to whatever took place, we should put it back up there. The second thing I have a big concern with and I kind of refuse to sit in silence about this. I'm a huge supporter of the Beaumont Police Department and I say that proudly. But also myself have roughly ninety employees and ideally I can say I know they all do things perfectly, but I know that's just not how it goes in the ideal world. Mr. Williams, I'm asking you to get some more clarity to this incident. What I'm seeing is not real clarity. We're kind of talking around it. And I think one of the problems that we have currently is if we don't talk about the problem, we keep talking around it, the problems will get worse. I'm more than confident, the officer that went that particular day, I'm more than confident in some body camera footage to show what actually transpired during that interaction. I'm asking you to look into it and I'm asking for an update on what took place on that particular day. Secondly, I was called by multiple employees. And once again, there's two sides to every story. But I was told that not only did they look for, come in for the footage, which were camera systems, I was told that they were opening boxes of chicken, frozen chicken, looking through the chicken. And one thing that I'm really concerned with, if we have a search warrant, and you guys can educate me on this, are we going in there to search for what the warrant says? Or we have jurisdiction to do more? I'm asking for clarity because I'm kind of confused if this is true. Because like I said, there's two sides to every story and I want to investigate it. If this is true, I want to know why were we looking in boxes of chicken? If we were going in there to retrieve the camera's footage? And I'm asking you to get clarity because this situation is going to get worse before it gets better. Sitting back, not saying nothing about it is not acceptable. We need to step in and see what's going on. And I think it's very important that we get to a point where we see what's going on because we have people coming to the podium speaking. And it's our job to be the buffer in the middle between staff and the citizens. And right now, I find myself in a tough position, but I just want clarity. I want to see everybody work together, get along, and I want to see things be better for Beaumont. Right now, it's a void. My energy has shifted just listening to some of the things that was experienced, but I also know in every instance, it's two sides to the story. But I'm asking you to give us more details, not a blatant response, but more details about what really took place. And I want you to investigate into seeing some of the footage. So you can see, if we were doing something wrong, we need to be held accountable, just like establishment needs to be. And I think it needs to be fast, straight across the board. I'm asking you to investigate into that. And I think the whole council needs to get a report. I think it's important that we all, you know, speak to this and see how we feel about this. And I just want clarity. So thank you. I'm looking forward to the report.
I think I must say, part of that's not my responsibility. I'm a city attorney, so we'll have to work together on some of the legalities involved in this. So it's not just the city manager has authority to some of these things, but we can work together on it.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Gatz.
Mr. Williams, during the communications part of the meeting today, a dashboard was shown for the Parks Projects and it referenced a shelter being built at Sprock Park. I'd like to get an update on a shelter to be constructed at Rogers Park. I think that was budgeted and approved and I just want to know where we're at on that. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gatz. Councilman Durio.
Well, thank you, Mayor. One, I'd like to thank all the citizens that actually came up and spoke today. I agree with Councilman Turner on everything that he said. And we do need clarity. We need, it's just getting worse. Also, Mayor, manager, I'd like us to look into our noise level ordinance and how it's enforced and if any changes are needed so we can have hard numbers when folks go out on a complaint. And other than that, everything... And like I said, the folks are gone, but I appreciate them coming and speaking to this. When that many people come out and speak on something, which we need to look into everything, but this is when they say the citizens have spoken, that happened today. And we got to look at that. Also, Saturday is Veterans Day, so there's a lot of events going on this whole week and Saturday. Also, we have a veterans luncheon at the Dory Miller Post Friday at 11:30. First come, first served. I think we got a hundred meals, so if you want to eat, come on. It's free to, it's free. So come on, bring your spouse, you know. It's right over there on Cardinal Drive. And this is our, thank our commander, Cliff Gilleri, and our adjutant Cheryl Williams for coming out. Appreciate it. And I remembered to bring my hat today. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. The city attorney.
So I do just kind of want to remind for the public, for those who aren't aware, the city is restricted from speaking on things that are posted items. So there was a lot of comment and feedback today by the public that wanted to speak and just some conversation, but we can't speak on items that aren't publicly posted and that is a violation of state law. And there's some Open Meetings Act. And so there's some very strict rules about open government that allows for that. That's one. Two, I serve at the pleasure of council. I think it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve my community. However, when members of the public ask questions of me, I can only respond as directed by council. So I wanted to make that clear for individuals who had questions about what happened today. The mayor and council have a responsibility to maintain an orderly meeting. And we have, council has adopted speaker rules. And because of that, those rules need to be enforced and fair and equitable to everyone. And so when we have situations like that, it's just incumbent upon us to remain fair and equitable. And I think that we try to do our best to do that today. So again, there are several items that were posted. And I'll just use, for example, our transit was a public hearing that allowed for dialogue between council persons and a citizen to ask questions for clarity. That doesn't always happen that way. And that's because open government. So if there are any additional questions on that, I just want to make sure that was clear for the record.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Just encourage everyone to get out and vote, exercise their right to vote and do that too. And just say to council that the situation, we take it very seriously and we will go through the processes that are there for us.
Okay, and I had the privilege of being at Beaumont United today. They had Special Olympics hosted by the YMBL in honor of Julie and Ben Rogers. It's been happening for forty-five years. There were a whole lot of the schools out there from all of Region Five and a lot of volunteers as well. It's a wonderful event and it continues tomorrow. And also, I appreciate all the comments that were made today and understand frustrations, but we have the responsibility to follow the law and we will continue to do that. So with that, we will now recess into executive session.